Let me just kick it off. Back to my operator job that I had in college, that I remember people's numbers.
I never forget.
I have, like myself.
My phone number, I just, if you might, tell me your name, forget it. You call the numbers, I just, I don't know why.
Can jump back on. Oh. Do you have to read that?
Mark Peter, for the water control.
Oh, sure.
The only add mark.
Could you do it before you first?
Yeah.
First thing?
Yep.
Jay, you're on. Roger that?
Start.
Good evening, Town of Adams. Today is Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020. It's now 7:00 PM, and I'm going to call to order the Selectment Meeting for the Town of Adams. As we have in the past, I'm going to start tonight with a statement regarding the Modified Open Meeting Law pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law found in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in that order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by turning into Channel 1303 and saying "you" to Northern Berkshire Community Television, or by calling area code 929-436-2866 with a meeting ID number of 995-3173-3181 with the following password, capital B-O-S, numerals 0, 6, 0, 3. Despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, a record of this meeting will be posted on NBCTC.org as soon as they are tabled. Now that we have that moment taken care of, I'd like to ask everyone for a brief moment of silence and reflection of the latest information coming out across our nation regarding not only the pandemic that we're facing, the challenges of our first responders, and the myriad of other social issues that our nation is facing. I think a moment, a brief moment of silence and reflection would be appropriate before we start this proceeding, which is the reason why our country is great for these processes that we have. Thank you, and with that, let's stand with the pleasure of I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America in the third world for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jay, before you continue, Peter, I'm getting messages that there's no sound for the television at home.
Oh, that's a lot.
Okay. But can I just check and make sure that those who are on the call can hear?
Sure, we'll take your phone.
I can hear you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay.
We have greens on all the desk microphones. Joey, you have a green on your desk?
Yeah.
You got a green on the phone, Peter? I got a green too.
Yeah, I've got. I'm looking through.
Okay.
Let me know if you need more time, Peter, or we'll continue. Okay. All right, as I said, ladies and gentlemen, tonight is Wednesday, June 3rd. We had our town meeting on Monday, June 1st. So with that comes the annual reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, which is why the Town Administrator has opened tonight's meeting. And I just want to say very briefly, I think it's important for us just to reflect momentarily that we actually are here tonight for a meeting, and that town government, the pillars of our open democratic society continue. So I just think that in the midst of our national turmoil and pandemic, which has really eroded the very basic fundamentals of our open government, that we are here tonight, meeting and continuing. So with that, I'll open the floor to item number three, reorganization of the board.
Mr. Town Administrator, I would like to state that I would like to continue on as Chair if the, if my colleagues would so choose to allow me to do so. Since we are currently still in a pandemic, we are still doing remote meetings, and we are now in the midst of reopening businesses in our community. I'd like to be able to continue on with that work, if that is something that the rest of the board would be interested in having me serve as their Chair.
Thank you. I'll entertain any other comments or any other, or any motions at this time.
I believe, given the complexity and the logistics involved, it doesn't make sense to me to change horses in midstream. No offense. So I would nominate Christine Hoyt as Chairman.
I'll second. I have a nomination. I have a second. Is there any discussion? Jill Dana? Jill Dana? Okay, I believe we have to do these as a roll call vote. Is that correct? All of our votes are roll called, I believe.
They are if we're remote, if some of us are remote, but we're on the road.
Okay. So I have a nomination. I have a second. I have no discussion. Any other nominations? Or are we continuing any other motion? Then we'll go forward with the vote. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? I'm abstaining. So Deb, for the record, I have, Christine, did you vote? I'm sorry.
I did, yeah.
I have four yeas. I have one abstention. Deb, can you just confirm that you have that vote?
I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn this back over to the Chair.
Thank you. And I am, Peter, I'm trying to still know that.
I, it's not just the light, it's, it's, there are pockets of no sound, but there is sound coming from here. So the recording will have sound.
Okay. I will let the three people who are blowing up my phone work. I'll let them know that. So at this time, I will call for nominations for Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll nominate Jim Bush for Vice Chair.
I have a motion to nominate Jim Bush.
I'll second.
A second by Rick. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or an abstention? So that is unanimous. All right. Thank you. So that brings us to approval of the minutes, and in front of us, we do have the minutes for the May 7th meeting and the May 13th meeting. And it does look like all members of the board are able to vote on these minutes. What is the board's decision with regard to these two meeting minutes?
I think the motion, we waive a reading of the minutes and approve as provided.
I have a motion. Yes, sorry.
May 7th and May 11, or 2020.
It's May 13.
Should have put my glasses on. I'm sorry. Thanks, Joe. And May 13.
Okay. I have a motion by Rick.
I'll second.
A second by Jim. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or an abstention? That brings us to public comments. Is there anyone on the call or in the room who wishes to speak with the Board of Selectmen about anything that is not on the agenda this evening? One more minute? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close public comments, and we will move on to old business. The first item under old business is the approval of the Fisk Community Choice Power Supply Program Aggregation Plan. In your packet, you do have a copy of the marked-up contract that is before us. I know that the Town Administrator has sent you some additional information prior to today's meeting, but I'm going to turn things over to you, Jay, just if you want to walk us through what's been changed and what the action is.
So just as background for folks, the Town of Adams is one of several communities that belong to Community Choice Power Supply Program. The Town of Adams joined in 2017. In fact, we may even have joined earlier, but the latest contract has been opened since 2017 and expires this November. Even just prior to even COVID-19 having an effect on the national economy, electricity rates have been repetitive, and the Community Choice Power Supply Program's manager, consultant Colonial Power, reached out to all the member communities and began the renegotiation process. That rate was accepted and signed, so just for informational purposes only. The current rate for those who are enrolled in the program that does expire in November is 0.104 kilowatts. The new rates are lower than that, I'm quite pleased to say. The standard option is 0.09, and there's a 0.096 even lower option as well. So those contracts have been signed and locked in. However, at the time of the renewal, which is going to begin from November 2020, the contract that deals with the towns and deals with the Department of Public Utilities, that's who the agreement is with, the Department of Public Utilities asks that some changes be done, so each member community within the region has the same changes and has to go through the same process. Most of the changes, as they were enumerated in the document, are housekeeping changes. There's no impact or change to the plan or any changes that our consumers or the town has consumers of the plan as well see. However, the one largest change can be found on page five, and that is product offering. So as you may remember, that in that last contract, remember 2017 through November 2020, there was only one option, which was at 0.10408 kilowatt. So those who enroll in the program will now have two options. That language that you see on page five and six is essentially the adding, so that there's now two rates that you can choose, and the other changes are language changes and other things as required. That is the summation of what's being asked of the board, is simply tonight not to approve the rate. The board is being asked by Colonial Power, as requested by DPU, simply to vote to accept the updated program plan as presented to you. That's all I have, ma'am Chair.
Okay. So are there any questions or comments before I entertain a motion to accept the updated program plan?
So Jay, you mentioned that the consumer, the residents of Adams, had two choices for price. So how is this going to be rolled out?
Same exact way as before. No changes. So once the program goes into place, which would be at the end of it, which I believe is going to be October or November of this year, well, I think it goes into effect 11/12. So sometime before 11/12, anyone who's an electricity consumer in the town will receive communication, as normal course, like everyone has before, or if you move to town and open up an electricity account, you'll get that communication, and you'll have that choice. Everyone will automatically default to that standard option, but they'll have the, they can opt out and go to the floating rate. They can opt out to go to their own supplier if it's available to them, or they can go to the product rate. Very simple, very straightforward. Does not change the mechanics of the plan, and it's a more competitive rate.
Right, so if you do nothing, you can say it's a more competitive rate?
Correct. Yep. I didn't mention it, but the average floating rate, I took a look just to show comparison, the average floating rate for a National Grid customer in the Town of Adams goes anywhere from point 11 to like 0.13, depending on the time of year. So just as a, if anyone's not familiar, the whole point of a Community Choice Power Supply Program is we have so many customers between all those communities. They are able to bid all that electricity, demand all that usage, and get a lower rate. But also, for a typical homeowner or someone who's paying utilities to their property, it stabilizes the cost. It's not floating all the time, which is what happens when the market goes national level.
Final question, what communities are part of this plan? Last time, we had a few with us. This time, we have?
We gained, yeah, we gained a little bit more. So all of the communities are the towns of Adams, Beckett, Cheshire, Clarksburg, Dalton, Florida, Blainsboro, Lennox, Monterey, New Marlborough, Sheffield, West Stockbridge, Williamstown, as well as the cities of Pittfield and North Adams.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, so say somebody's with a non-program. Are they going to receive notification that this is available for them, or has something that they're going to have to research and do themselves?
That's a good question. Deb might be able to answer that, she's been more familiar with the program. But all of the billing goes through National Grid anyway, so it's possible the customer will see the new option. It's going to depend on that customer's individual contract with whomever they've decided to away. But I don't know if anyone has done that. That's just an option that this plan has for one of our consumers. And that's all available on Colonial Power Group, Backlash, and Adams. Or just type in Adams Community Power Plan, and it comes right up. All that information's there. Thank you, Jay. Thank you.
Anything else? The action before us is to accept the updated program plan as it's been presented.
I'm making a motion now to accept the aggregation plan as presented by Colonial Power Group.
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Under old business, there's the item Fiscal 21 Budget Process Update and Action. I'm going to turn things over to Jay, as we know that this has been a daily discussion about what to do with the Fiscal 21 budget, and depending on the information that we're getting from the state, it helps move us in that direction. So I'm going to turn things over to you, Jay, and see where we're at and what our options are.
But that's the adjective I can describe to this whole budget process, is certainly dynamic. That is constantly changing with information and data coming in. And there's no right way or wrong way. However, just as a rehash, there's essentially three ways that the Town of Adams could go forward with this budget. One, we could make expected budgetary cuts now, without really knowing how much our state aid or any other revenue number schools commit. So we would be essentially blindly cutting our budget and then going forward through it, not knowing really if we needed to cut 200,000, 300, or half a million from the budget. There's no real community that is in a position similarly situated to Adams that is doing that. Those communities that I've spoken with who are doing that have been able, are currently more wealthy, or they have larger stabilization accounts. So they've been able to anticipate, say, 10% or 15% reduction in state aid, back to that number with other funding source. For Adams, that is not the case. For most of the communities in Northern Berkshire, that is not the case. So we don't feel that's appropriate for us to do, as I stated before, at the meeting. The second option that we had has been to move forward with the Fiscal 21 budget with the existing numbers that we received from the state, and that stated number was that $2.5 million that I stated before. We know that number's not likely to hold. Our best guess is that number will probably be reduced anywhere from 10% to 15%. So we could move forward with that type of a budget, and as I said, that path was one of our paths, and we are also on the other path, and I'll speak about it in a moment. But we could move forward with that budget, knowing that we have to cut it. And remember, Duvall had brought up the question at our meeting, when would we do that? When would be the appropriate time of the procedure to do that? We would do that before the tax recapitulation sheet has to be sent to the Department of Revenue. That's the time of year where we sit down with the assessors, we look at new growth, we look at all those formulas that go into determining the tax rate. So we would have to determine exactly how much we're going to cut by and go through Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and another town meeting in order to execute all of those cuts, then go to the tax recap sheet. The other path that we've also been parallel planning for has been what now seems to be probably the best course of action, and that is what's called a 112, or a month-to-month budget. What that means is, is that we are allowed to spend each month a set amount of money that is similarly based on last year's budget. We create it, the Board of Selectmen has to approve it, it gets submitted to the Department of Revenue, the Department of Revenue essentially blesses it, and then we can begin spending it, then we start the process all over for the subsequent month. There's pros and there's cons with both approaches. That frankly has been what we have spent the majority of our time trying to assess. What is the best path forward for us based on our financial situation? For example, we spend an amount of money on our behalf. So for example, in UW, we have some projects, a narrow track list, $15,000 for the track list, $217,000 we have allocated for the sewer repair work that has to be done in Commercial Street that's not covered by the state or federal law for the surface roadway project, among other projects. We won't be able to spend capital. We will not necessarily begin, be able to spend a lot of discretionary spending. It's designed to cover salary, it's designed to cover operating expenses. But each month, we put it together. And there's Department of Revenue parameters, and what we provided in your packet for this evening is Department of Local Services, both in 2020-6, just for information. This lays out what the Board of Selectmen's role is, as well as the Department of Revenue's processes. So we've gone back and forth. Remember, Duvall asked some really good questions that got us thinking. We had a pretty good, robust conversation at the Finance Committee level that also got us thinking. We brainstormed again, and we went through, and we realized that perhaps at this point, a month-to-month is best. The other factor that went into consideration is for our school district budget, we have to wait for the Town of Cheshire also to pass their school budget. So we would not have a school budget on the town meeting anymore. So we figure at this point, if we go month-to-month, we get the state aid figures open for August or September at the latest, we put together a budget at that point, have a single town meeting, and go through the normal process at that point with hard data. It's one or the other. What it does do is eliminate having two town meetings. The other factor that we realized just within the past week is town clerk and town moderator have been receiving some feedback from town meeting members, particularly members of our vulnerable population, that they were not necessarily content at meeting at this point. So we were concerned that we would go through the process of having a town meeting and not be able to field a quorum. So taking all of that into consideration, at some point, the rubber has to hit the road, we have to commit on a path forward. Internally, in our mind, we always kind of felt that first week of June, between myself and the town accountant, determined that that's kind of when we wanted to commit, where we needed to go. So we've taken the paths as parallel as possible, and at this point, we feel it's best to go on a month-to-month budget. It's new. We haven't done it before, but we're not the only community doing it. It's split about 50/50 in the county. There's still some communities that are going forward with a budget, that they've made some cuts. There's still, you know, one or two that are going forward with the original numbers that know what they can cut, and most of our neighbors are going month-to-month. Not a wrong way, it's not a right way. We're just trying to figure out the best way.
Now, the month-to-month, Jay, are we going to have to have a meeting with the Finance Committee every month, or for this one?
No. It's the streamlined process that you'll find in that, you know, when you get home and you're sitting in your chair, you know, read that through. That lays out the process for it. It is somewhat cumbersome, and that was frankly, one of the reasons why we didn't want to go month-to-month initially. We had been, the munis, which is our accounting software, can produce a month-to-month budget, and then we tweak it from there. So we know all along, we could do it, but it does add each month. We have to present it to the Selectmen, the Selectmen have to approve it, and then we can begin spending it. So we have to be on our game. So like, for example, at the June 17th meeting, if we go this route, we anticipate presenting the July Fiscal 21, July 2020 budget has to be approved. When that's done, we have to submit it to the Department of Revenue. The Director of Revenue says, you're good to go, Town of Adams, and then we can spend that. And that's every department.
How is that going to play out with the school system? Do we have Cheshire and Adams combined here? So, I mean, we approve a budget for, and they say, no, we're not going to, or how is it?
So one of, I had a meeting on Monday morning, the Superintendent and the Town Administrator of Cheshire. So the school district, I'm not sure about McCann, but I can tell you for sure, Uzic Valley is going month-to-month as well. They will submit their month-to-month to DESI, the Department of Secondary Education. DESI will then generate the first quarter assessment for the Town of Adams based on a month-to-month. So that is due September 1st. Whether or not that occurs is yet to be seen. But they're on month-to-month, Cheshire's on month-to-month, we're on month-to-month. So you are not approving a school budget. You are approving only an expenditure if you would see it, and there would be no school district expenditure until presumably September, when the first quarter assessment bills do. And that's still a ways off, and that's still a question mark in terms of whether that will be in process.
Yeah, I understand that. But I mean, like Darren was talking about crossing the administration, whatever. Are these cuts still going to go through, or are we going to stay as is right now?
So those are questions for the Superintendent. However, I can tell you, in my conversation with him, he anticipates his Chapter 70 money, his state aid money being reduced, and he will have to take some level of action within the school district budget as well. So we will all be essentially working on our budgets like we would in January, except we're likely to be doing it in August. And that was kind of one of the compelling factors for me, is rather than working on a budget reduction plan, the school district and the district of town is already, is working on a full budget, where we would kind of be in a different procedural posture. It would still work, but this way here, we're in the same procedural posture, we're building a budget. So they would give us a new budget, revised budget, we would have the workshop meetings here again, we'll have the workshop meetings again with the Finance Committee. We're just going to be doing it in the dead heat of summer rather than winter. And as I said, there's no right or wrong way. We're just trying to determine what's the best path forward for us. Because frankly, even if we pass the Fiscal 21 budget, we would still be very cautious in what we'd spend on a month-to-month basis. The only difference is, is when you pass a full budget, there's a lot less you have to worry about. You're not looking at monthly other than your, you know, monthly expenditures to make sure you're not in deficit on line. In this case, this board has a conversation every month about the next month expenditures, and it's going to be different. We have certain fixed costs that have to be paid on a monthly basis. So Mary will be looking at that, and will be presenting a budget that says, you know, month of July, we pay these bills, which you won't necessarily see those lines. And it's going to be new for, a brave new world for everybody. But that's the kind of snapshot that I can, I can give you.
Now, this is based off of last year's budget, correct?
Yeah, so they take fiscal, I don't know if it's the final fiscal 20 number, or if it was the appropriated number. We have to get that information from the DOR, but that's what's called a 112. It's broken up into those 12. But DOR is starting to give, now that, you know, we can talk about it, Mary's been digging into it a little bit more, we can structure that within what we need to do. So like, we had concern as to whether or not we would be able, as other communities on Congress calls that one, like if you have a retirement payout, if you have certain large payouts that you have to do, can you still do that on a 112? There are still certain spending restrictions that come along with a month-to-month budget. So we have to get guidance from DOR as we hit each of those bills that are due, can we pay them? And for the most part, we're receiving guidance from the Department of Revenue that says they're going to work with us and all that to make sure. And we're not the only ones that have spoken. I was on two conference calls already this week about the 112 budget process, and I'm thinking of certain questions, and they're getting asked at the same time, so.
Okay. Does that put a freeze on our payroll as far as steps or cost of living raises or anything like that?
So collective bargaining agreements.
I'm sorry.
So collective bargaining agreements that have not yet been finalized. So for us, it's the clerical unit and the police department would not receive cost of living increases. The Department of Public Works, which is our third and final collective bargaining unit, would receive an increase because it's contractually bargained for. So they would build an employee. The initial guidance that we received was that exempt or non-union employees would not be able to receive a cost- be able to receive a cost of living increase. However, late today, we received conflicting information that said they can't. So, I can't, we're working on it little by little, but that could be an impact. Nonetheless, no matter what we do, once we pass a budget, it would end up being retroactive anyway to July first. So, we either pay upfront, or we pay, you know, we pay later.
Well, that was kind of where I was trying to get, it would eventually get paid, so.
Would you be retroactive back? Yes, July first.
That would be based on the new contract approval, right? So, if these contracts, as soon as you approve that new contract, then you go retroactive to whatever you agreed to.
Correct.
In that contract.
And I would hope that once we kind of get a good budget path going, and we get into a good rhythm, police is pretty much dealt, we still have to continue with clerical, but I would anticipate that being fairly short, probably a short part of the process. Just COVID, I can't say this enough, but COVID nineteen just disrupted the entire timeline of trying to do, you know, municipal finance, you kind of have those dypos every month, you know, you kind of know you're gonna deal with this every time you do this, oh, this might require you to agree to, you kind of start to, disrupted everything.
Just a little discipline item, if everyone could speak up a little bit, there's some trouble hearing even in Zoom. So, I know that the speaker phones are placed as best as we can. Jim, yours is the hardest because I keep forgetting to move that. So, that's my apologies, but even Jay, I'm hearing, is a little quiet.
Okay. I'll check the volume.
Okay. Apologize for that interruption of the conversation, but I'm getting it from a couple of different places, except the sound is awful.
Are you able to hear?
It's being looked into, it's just, funny thing is, you can hear it in our, I put that in, Cheshire.
Oh, that's me.
I might be good, but.
Interesting.
But to lighten up the phone line there too, so.
Okay.
Well, that's good, that means that we have viewers.
Yes, there we go. So, I apologize for the interruption about the logistics, but I will open it up for any more questions or comments, just asking anybody to project a little bit more, if you can.
Yeah, you stated that there was no right or wrong, but apparently, the first round was wrong because we've changed, correct? No, that's not correct statement. Okay, well, don't, I've got something to say. I believe I said that I thought a one twelve would be the best, and before I could elaborate on it, it was poo-poo. It was just, no, no, that's good because we won't be able to pay our employees and all this kind of stuff, is that correct?
I don't remember the exact conversation, but I can tell you this one's, Joe, as we've gone all along, we've gone back and forth. There have been days where we thought a monthly is better, and then there's been other days where we haven't. It's all, it's a new sea that we're swimming in. So, absolutely, I mean, for example, Mr. Cowley the other night had brought up some points that I hadn't thought of, and I dwell on it over the weekend, and then I brought it back Monday morning. I gathered our folks together, and I said, what do you think of this point? And they said, gee, those are decent points. I've done as much research as I possibly can along with Mary and town councils, to make sure that we're doing everything legally correct, which we are. We're on, and town council's on the line tonight as well. I'm on every Nass Municipal Association conference call I can get, and Mary and I, as well as the treasurer, we're reviewing these polls and fact them out. And things change, you know, every day, so I can tell you, it's been incredibly hard. Can I tell you that I wish we had just kind of set a path early on and just stuck with it and not done this? Yes, I certainly do, but I've learned to just have to be flexible, and that's why we thought all along, we kind of had these two parallel paths, and we kind of knew at one point that we had to commit, and that's the point that we're at. So, yeah, you most certainly may have had that foresight early on, and you were probably right at that point, but we kind of needed to go through the process and say, where are we now, and what's the best way to go?
I have a few other things. I'd like to comment on John Cowley. He had everything down that I was thinking, and I never talked to him about it or anything because I kind of try to do things on my own. I felt early on in this budget process that we wanted to show Berkshire County that we could muddle through this COVID nineteen and have our meetings and, you know, everything was gonna be the same, but it wasn't the same, it never was the same since COVID nineteen. And we're talking about spending a lot of time on, you know, we're gonna go down, and we're gonna have our town meeting outside, and, you know, and we were looking too far ahead instead of waiting. And when I see somebody like Stephen Shepherd, who's on the finance committee in Woodstown, one of the best economic persons in the country, come out early on and say that anybody that doesn't do a one twelve at this point, you know, is doing the wrong thing. And once again, I just felt that we were going way too fast with the budget because I felt like we wanted to show the world that the Town of Adams can muddle through anything and get things done before anybody else can, to show that the Town of Adams is good. And I was a little bit, I was on the conference call when the finance committee was going, and Chairman Hoyt said, oh, we've got contingent plans in case we have to, and the budget and finance committee subcommittee met, and I didn't see that posted anywhere.
You actually attended that meeting, it was really on.
Yeah, I did attend it, but there was no talk about what was gonna be cut.
And Mary and Jay were asked to put together a list, and they have that list.
Well, it didn't come out, Kristy, now be frank.
I am being frank, and I'm actually quite offended that you think that we are being prideful in the way we went through our process and saying that we wanted to be tough guys and wanted to show Berkshire County.
Right.
No, we thought that was the right path, because we have a number of capital projects that we wanted to get done, and that you've wanted to get done, Joe, that our department has wanted to get done. And so, we were moving forward in a process that we thought was the best at that time, and things have changed.
Yes, but Kristy, Chairman.
But it's not because we want to be tough, we want to put ourselves on the mix.
Okay, well, Chairman Hoyt, you said on the conference call that the budget and finance subcommittee went over all the possibilities that would have to be cut. I was there, none of that came out. The primary budget was given out by Mary Ferber. There was no talk whatsoever in that meeting about what we were going to cut. And if you could tell me what those were, I'd be happy to hear them.
No, and I will tell you what I told the finance committee, that that is something that is sitting with the town administrator and the town accountant.
Oh, okay.
Because it involves personnel and it involves services, and for us to make publish, publish a list of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of possible cuts would be irresponsible of us, because what it's going to do is instill fear among all of our employees and all of our residents, because what's gonna be cut is going to be severe.
Okay.
And so, that is why it is sitting with the town accountant and the town administrator, and it is not sitting with the board, it is not sitting with the budget subcommittee, it is a direction that the budget subcommittee gave to the town administrator and the town accountant for them to put that list together.
So, you're saying, I, as a selectman, I can't go looking?
If you would like to look at it one-on-one and sit with the town administrator and ask what that list looks like, fine, but it would not be brought before a public body in a public setting, because then it makes that list published.
Okay, then, my last question, I want to give that longer test, but how was that made and where was it made? If I was sitting in that meeting where this was done, and I didn't hear anything?
It's a recipe given at that meeting for them to do that work.
Okay, I stopped there, I don't believe it was. I never heard anything of that sort.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering, you know, you've got to watch out for open meeting laws, because you said specifically that the subcommittee on budget finance met, and that, and I was there, and I didn't hear anything about contingency plan to cut anything. It was just a bear of the primary budget, and there was no talk whatsoever in that budget of what we would have to do if we went forward with that budget and had to make cuts. Okay.
Other questions and comments about the fiscal twenty-one budget process?
And I have one thing in common that's saying, you know, Jay, you mentioned a democratic process, that doesn't seem too democratic to me.
It doesn't?
This telling me that, in that meeting, that it was brought out what was going to be cut, because it never was, and so, that tells me it's not a democratic kind, democratic if I, as a selectman, aren't able to say and hear what's supposed to be cut, so that if the budget went forward in the way it was proposed, where the cuts would take place.
John, you had a comment, question?
Well, throughout this whole process, I've had questions in regards to going forward with a budget that we have no idea what the state aid's going to be, no idea what the revenues are going to be due to this crisis. So, it just continued to gnaw at me, and I just kept bringing it up, and that's what you do, you know, I kept fighting through. And I agree, this is the right way to go. When we do receive the state aid, the cherry sheets approved, then we can start to make decisions. The, we'll make decisions with real numbers, and then we'll go forward. This process may be, it's good as a good baseline, good as education going through the current budget, but it wasn't gonna be the final budget, and that's my opinion. And in regards to the cuts, though, we were going, the budget that was going through, that was started by the budget working, the budget subcommittee, working with the town administrator, was before the COVID nineteen hit, and we started off on a budget. And, you know, right or wrong, here we are. And I think we're making the decision at the right time to ensure that we go with the one twelve budget process until we get the numbers. In regards to the cuts, that was a direction to the town administrator and the town accountant, you come up with a list. They had, that list of cuts has nothing to do with this current budget process, nothing. We're gonna take this budget, take it to town meeting, get it approved, cuts are never gonna be talked about. Now, when, and the thought was, when the state came back with the numbers, that not they be ready, the town administrator would be ready to present to the budget subcommittee the cuts that they recommend, instead of having to do it within a week or two really quick, get it ready, because we're gonna go there, we knew we were gonna head in that direction. So, they're just gonna be prepared for it. We, those cuts would have nothing to do with this, the budget process we were following. They still need to have them ready, because we could be cut ten percent, fifty percent, no one knows, no community knows, we have no idea. So, and maybe the federal, maybe the federal government will come through for us, who knows? So, but I agree with this one twelve process, it's a right thing to do, so, and that also impacts the town meeting too, right?
Correct.
So, you'll get to that, right?
Yep, and the town moderator and the town clerk are both on the call, so if there are any questions or if they wanted to make any comments, they chose to call in to be present. They also wanted to know what was going on with the budget process and what would, that would mean for town meeting.
I also want to add to that, there's been a tremendous amount of collaboration among my counterparts, Mayor Bernard, going back and forth, asking, and there's been no general consensus, each community has to make its, make its own decision. And it was over the weekend where I gave it a lot of thought, and I think, remember, Duval can certainly contest that, not contest, but I called him and ran some stuff by him on his experience, particularly with budgeting, and I got his point of view, we sat down with town accountant again, and we ran out pros and cons, what happens if we do this, what happens if we do that? We received the information that we were waiting for from the school district, Cheshire made their decision, and it all kind of jelled this Monday, right at the time where we felt we had to make a decision. So, I will only state that I apologize to anyone if they feel as though I was being nefarious, or if I was doing something inappropriate, but this is all uncharted ground for all of us, and I'm doing the best I possibly can to do what's right for the town.
I mean, we're in charting waters right now. We have to, when it does come time to get this budget moving, we have an excellent idea of what's going on. We can't just sit on our laurels and say, oh, jeez, we gotta get a budget tomorrow. It don't work that way. We gotta work, keep working at this, and I think we're doing the right thing.
And I'm sure inevitably, you know, to Jim, as we go through the one twelve process, we're gonna do something. I'm quite confident.
It's not inevitable, it's just too much going on. I mean, nobody's ever dealt with anything of this magnitude. It's just.
And there's still a lot, as I said before, there's still a lot of contradicting information that is coming out, even from the Department of Revenue, which is supposed to be the clearinghouse. So, even they are doing their research, and we kind of sit back and wait for them to agree on their guidance, and then we execute the guidance. So, as we go month to month, it's still gonna be a learning curve for all of us as we go.
Great.
Yeah, just, we're going with the one twelve. I think we should be aware that unless we've already got contracts for the new control system in the sewer line, the price tag just went up.
Correct.
Because now you're dragging it out six more months, which all the costs are gonna go up.
Correct, that was one of our concerns. Also, we have a piece of equipment at the DPW that we are gonna fix the track list and put it back out there as vegetation control, you know, applications to it if they aren't. We can't spend that in that way under capital. So, we even have to go back and look and see, do we spend operating money on that and get that repaired? We have to look at each of these issues that we have and prioritize, frankly, and spend the money that was our priorities now on a month to month basis. So, that capital list by the way, we received probably may not even look like that when we get to the formal budget process in, say, August or September. And we can't even predict when that's gonna happen. Legislature has not yet told us when they're going to meet and be able to put a budget together. So, we're hoping for August, but there's no guarantee for that either.
So, if we did approve the budget at the process we were going through, we would have, starting July one, we would have had a budget and started spending at a increase, you know, three percent increase to the school district, McCann eight percent, and, you know, all we would have been spending at this level, right? Which we know we can't, because we're gonna have to reduce. So, we go two to, you know, three, four months spending at this level, and all of a sudden, it all drops, and the state, you know, comes back with fifteen percent cut. We just spent three months at this level. We have a budget we approved, but we don't have that money, you know, so we, you know, so now you gotta go back and reduce in the remaining months you have of what you just spent in the first three months, because we approved the budget, right? So, again, pros, cons, which every way you do it is pros and cons.
But if I overpay my personal electric bill the following month, I reduce it by that much. You know, my bill's ninety and I pay, or sixty and I pay ninety, the following month, I'm only gonna pay thirty, because.
One of the conversations that we had, Mary and I had, is, you know, from an accounting standpoint, was the, from an accounting and auditing standpoint, passing a budget was cleaner, because you should have the budget, you'd have all the articles, you'd have all the authorization, so you could spend your economic development fund, you could spend your enterprise fund. So, as we got guidance from these, you know, in May, they issued the whole twenty twenty dot six, which said that we can spend on the revolving accounts, so that helps us, because we have some revolving accounts. We didn't think initially we'd be able to spend off the economic development fund. That's not in this whole, we just found out this week, we can appropriate from the economic development fund on a one twelve budget. So, as of today, we got more, you know, information, so it's constantly changing. Because that was one of the things that we talked about, you know, how do we, from an auditing standpoint, how do we do it? But we're permitted to do a one twelve, and we'll just keep good records. And the key is gonna be, we're not gonna spend a lot of money, we're only gonna spend what we have to. Once the board decides that this is the route that we wanna go, Mary and I will start looking at internal controls, and we're gonna have to figure out from all the department heads, what are your bills coming out a month to month? What do you have for July, what do you have for August? We have that type of conversation.
I know you didn't mean, I just wanted to say that, not that we spend willy-nilly anyway, because we always spend kind of tight bar.
We're a very lean and mean community, and every dime that we have has some level of impact, which again, is why you're gonna see other communities be able to go forward with this budget, and we've, we're not going to, because they already made their cuts. So, if they know that they have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut that they have to take from their state aid account, they might be able to, they may have decided to take two hundred and fifty thousand out of their stabilization account and plug that hole immediately and just not do a couple of capital projects. Every community has to look at how their budget is structured, how we fund our capital off of free cash allocation. So, we knew ahead that we'd be able to spend some capital. So, when we went in there and made cuts, you know, I, we put back as the budget process was going, about a hundred thousand dollars back in free cash, but that doesn't reduce your personnel expenditure or your operating expenditure. So, we weren't really making an impact, it's not cutting our personnel and operating budget, it's not reducing the tax rate by doing that, because we don't fund it that way, other communities do. So, that's why, getting back to, you know, what would the cuts look like? We have that menu of any. We have that menu of anywhere, you know, from a couple of dollars all the way up to a, to a catastrophic $800,000 menu of, of cuts. The key is what do you cut by? And we're not going to know that until we get our revised cherry sheets, John, at our state aid sheet. And we know, okay, this is what we're looking at. Even then, when you build your budget and that cherry sheet comes out and all your, all of those revenues, oh, excuse me, all those receipts, they're all estimated anyway. So you're still working off estimated receipts, which is why we're very conservative in how we estimate those, those receipts, your outside tax, all of those, all of those items, they're found in a really part of your budget. So we even have to watch that as we go, whether or not we go month to month or whether, whether we go with a budget.
Are there questions or comments from the board? If not, I know that the town moderator and the town clerk are on the call and I, I'd be happy to hear anything from either one of them if they've been part of the process as well. Oh, I can't hear you. Myra's trying to talk. Now she's making faces at me.
Technology is great.
Yep. Haley, is there anything while Myra's getting her sound? Can't hear you, you're muted.
I have nothing to add, I'm, I'm perfect with whatever you guys do.
And Haley, I think before you got on the call, Jay had mentioned that we do have some town meeting members who have already reached out indicating that they would not be willing to attend a, a town meeting at this point while we're still in the midst of COVID-19. Is that correct?
Yes, I had two members indicate that.
Myra, I don't know which one is your phone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I think it makes the most sense to do with what the board has decided to do and the town administrator going forth with one 12. From a town meeting perspective, I think the town meeting members would be more comfortable voting a budget with some level of certainty versus, um, or okay, we're going to vote this number and then you're going to cut. Um, my pulse on town meeting is that, that they like a level of certainty. So I think going with the one 12th and waiting for a revised cherry sheet makes, um, the most sense at this point. As much as I would have liked to have met at Bofield under a tent, you know.
It still might be a reality.
We can do it in September.
Okay, thank you both. I don't think that is, I don't know what that was. John, did you have?
So I've been looking at state law, which I probably shouldn't, we have lawyers and, you know, we have a town council. But what I read, and it may be not be correct and I'll ask town council to verify, is that the moderator makes the decision and comes to the board of selectmen when a town meeting cannot be held on, on the date that's been approved or the location. So I think the first step in the process as, when we get to town meeting, is that the moderator should come to the board of selectmen and indicate that due to a state of emergency, due to the COVID-19 virus, um, that she recommends that the town meeting, uh, location and date be changed. And town council, if you don't mind, if you can go verify that for me.
I would also like that verified because I was on a call earlier today about town meetings and they indicated that as long as your town meeting warrant wasn't approved and published, that did not need to have the moderator make that declaration. You're not a rookie, but I, I think that that just goes to show that it changes.
Yeah, so just verification.
From day to day, so I think it's, um, something that just needs to be verified.
Right, and that language is found in, Ed, I'll just point out, if you're looking at the, the DOR bill, that language is found in sections one through four of chapter 53 acts of 2020.
2020, what about 1890 when I was looking at it?
Myra, you're unmuted, we don't want to laugh that hard.
Sorry.
So if I could just chime in Christine, uh, I think what John is pointing out is accurate, but that, that always takes place at the town meeting, um, you know, after the warrant's been approved. And the warrant has, has not been approved yet, so, uh, I don't think the moderator's input at this point matters as much as, uh, whether the warrant's approved or not.
Okay, thank you, try Myra.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I'd like to say too that, um, it's being talked about and I think it's been finalized that, um, you can have 10% deduction in, uh, your town meeting members to make a warrant.
That's only for, uh, open town meetings, if we're open, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Yep, because we, we were hoping that that would get passed, but in the plan to build that came through today and it was not open. So, all right.
They were talking about that today as well on that call. And there wasn't a number. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, without either of our options, um, to either go forward with the full budget, um, as we work on that path or to go to a one 12 budget, um, and then have the board of selectmen be reviewing the July, I mean, 20 budget at our next, whether June 20th.
And make a motion to go with the one 12 budget.
I have a motion by Jim.
Second.
I have a second by John. Is there further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
All in.
Anyone opposed or an abstention? Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, under new business, we do have, um, a placeholder for, uh, any COVID-19 town operations update. Jay, is there anything to update on?
Just that right now, we're collaborating with Cheshire, North Adams and other communities as well as our emergency operations, uh, center in North Adams. So we're consistent in terms of what municipal operations look like as we move into these phases. Phase one had almost zero change for municipal operations other than office space and there was, uh, some possibility for curbside service for libraries. Phase two opens up a little bit more, uh, we believe libraries may be able to open up at that point. What that looks like for us, what that looks like for our sister communities, we're not sure yet. We're going to try to be consistent, so all of that research is ongoing now. So for the municipalities, I wouldn't expect, uh, any significant changes through the month of June. You know, also we, we do have some staff that are presently furloughed, so we also have to take into consideration, you know, what that looks for as we change fiscal years and we go to a one 12 budget. So we have to take all that into consideration. In terms of the private sector, in terms of businesses, the best resource that we can direct our business community to is reopeningmassachusetts.gov or mass.gov backslash reopening mass. Just type in your browser reopen Massachusetts. That is the same source of information we use on the municipal side, independent of any conference calls or meetings we have with the Mass Municipal Association or, uh, Department of Health or anything like that. That is your best source of information with specific guidance for sectors. If you're a restaurant, if you're a gymnasium, uh, gym, any of that, all of that specific information is there. Right now, what we're looking at is phase two that we believe is imminent if the number is old. Uh, we anticipate, uh, restaurants will be able to resume outdoor table dining, not indoor. We'll be able to continue curbside, we'll be able to continue takeout, but they're going to expand to, uh, outdoor dining. So we've already started to look at, um, in combination with our local licensing authority as well as, uh, our inspection services department, what that is going to look like. This board will have the ability to approve a process, to approve an establishment that has not yet been permitted to have outdoor seating. So for example, the town of Adams does not have a zoning bylaw that permits a restaurant to have outdoor seating. The state has said, we don't care. We are going to allow the chief executive of the city or town here at the select board to approve a process to allow a restaurant to come in and petition and say, I'd like to do outdoor seating. So we're looking, uh, we've asked Mark and Jerry in our inspection of services department to dig into those requirements, what our concerns would be as a community. Ed, we're on the liability issue, I'll be in touch this week about that if it's a sidewalk. Uh, I put your hat on in the conversation, so I'll be in touch with you about that. So we're going to try to expedite that and get that done as early as possible. So as soon as the governor unlocks that gate, uh, our businesses, our restaurants, we will have access to that. We'll do our best with that. I don't know if there's anything, Christine, you wanted to kind of add to that conversation?
I will just add, um, that in terms of that process that Jay just mentioned, that the board of selectmen would have to approve, we are looking at possibly building a special meeting on Monday for the board of selectmen to review that process. It is our understanding that the governor may be making a, a, the call to start the reopening process as early as Tuesday or Wednesday of next week in order for us to be ready for that and allow our businesses to be part of that opening. It would be in our best interest to, uh, at least look at the process that has been, that the inspectional services team is putting together and put that before our board. So, um, I think that we'll get a little bit more information, but we'll have to post it by the end of the day tomorrow. But most likely we're looking at this board meeting at, at a special day and time, which would be Monday of next week. So that's, that's what I would add to that board.
Yeah, if I may, um, yeah, it's, it's going to be tricky in our town because our sidewalks are so narrow and, you know, if you start putting tables out there, I know in the past that was a consideration when people wanted to do it because they'd have people come forward. Same when people wanted those pyramid signs out in front of their, their stores, but, you know, like for instance, the daily grind, they could always use Armory Court and that sort of thing. But as far as sidewalks, I know in the bigger cities, they've been taking away room on the roadside to accommodate that, but it's a little different here.
And that's a lot of what Mark and Jerry are taking into consideration with the number of, um, the establishments in town.
Right, now, I would take that, I like that, the idea, but I think the board will have to talk about that because now you're, you're allowing basically a business to utilize public land as far as Armory Court. I like the idea that it would open up a restaurant so people could get out. But I think we just need to make a ruling as an exception to the normal rule.
I think it's my understanding that it would only be through November 1st. There's a expiration date, so it's just for this period of time. So it wouldn't be forever.
Temporary, just to get people back on their mind.
Okay.
Would it be full restaurant service with alcohol?
Yes, because of the kind of corollary to the outdoor dining permission, you know, or limit that has to be made for the liquor licenses to allow the outdoor serving as well. So that was taken into consideration.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you a few restaurants that, they're going to have issues because there really isn't anywhere for them to go outside other than the sidewalk.
There's only two side levels microphone speakers, so.
Yes.
All right, I thought Joe had one over there.
No, but thank you, I appreciate you looking out for me, Rick. All right, go ahead, John.
You know, because we're business friendly here and I was, uh, we thought we were going to reach out to the businesses, the restaurants and let them know that I'm glad we're going to have it Monday, have it quickly. Um, so we, you know, the governor indicated that the owners of restaurants, to give them time and maybe this week to get into the restaurants and start to prepare for this. So, um, I'm glad it's going to be held on Monday. Uh, another question I've been hearing is about youth sports. And phase two has limited youth sport activity and I tried to find specifically what that meant. Do you know what that?
Haven't been able to find it. Same question we had, the fed source is D O, uh, Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. They've got some, some guidance on there, they have a whole separate document and they provide it. But it's not exactly, it flushes it out. The other thing to remember too is just because the state says you can now do it, it may not be best for the local, the local community in terms of being able to manage it. Like for example, there was some conflicting language that we found because, uh, Mr. Tolbert, DPW director and I were having a conversation with our facilities working committee to say, we need to be ready for when, you know, we can do this. And there was some conflicting information that we found where it said, you can assemble it, but you can't touch a, a common ball. Uh, and then you could only practice, well, how can you practice if you're going to play, you know, sport? You can only do drills and things like that. So we need to do more research on that before we do it. And then we're going to have to make sure, because DPW's been stretched, we're going to have to make sure that they know the anticipated reopening date.
And also playground, last thing, playgrounds, we're also mentioning, uh, space two has started to be open, so we, we have some information on that.
Well, one of our concerns with playground, and Robert certainly, uh, discussed this morning, but some of the requirements for playgrounds is sanitation requirement.
Right.
So now we're back to the same conversation that we had, what's the priority for our DPW staff? So this is a really hard, so if we, if we decide to do that, if we collectively decide that we want the playgrounds, we're going to have to have them tasked with sanitizing the playground equipment on some type of schedule. That's it, that was the conversation we had with the co enforcement officer this morning actually, about what that requirement is going to look like.
Just a request, if you have more information for, in these two areas, youth sports, playgrounds, uh, for Monday, bring it forward. Thank you.
I think maybe what we should do is have Mark come in, Christine perhaps, in the presentation. Mark is on every Department of Public Health, local board of health calls he can. Uh, and he's been a substantial wealth of information for me, uh, to be able to go out and have these conversations in terms of how are we going to do this, uh, him and Jerry and, and Robert with an internal sanitation plan as well, so.
Again.
A lot of work.
I feel like the lieutenant governor announced some information about youth sports today as part of the press conference, but I haven't, I need to read it, just fully digest it, and I haven't. Um, and I was just looking for it on the look page and I don't see it yet. All right, if there's nothing else for the COVID-19 update, um, the next item under new business would be approval of the town meeting warrant, which, um, as we are not going to be moving forward with the town meeting, uh, later this month, I'd like to.
Are you in favor of?
Okay.
Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? All in. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, that is unanimous. All right. The next item, um, is the annual transportation fees for fiscal 2021. I had asked our DPW director, Robert Tolbert, to, uh, join us this evening and so he is here. He's also put together, um, some information, the two spreadsheets that were in your packet, um, is the information that Robert shared with us in our last meeting. So he asked that that be put back in front of people, but then there was also kind of a, a breakdown of some numbers and, uh, possible projected increase in costs. I also know that the tax sector is on the phone as well. Um, I think she's somebody who handles all of the sales of the permits and the tabs. So she's also a resource for this conversation. Um, and I appreciate that Kelly is on the line and, Kelly, I'm going to unmute you, but.
Thank you.
Just, just be careful. Uh, I just wanted to give you that heads up that I've been unmuted you. But I'm going to send things over to Jay and Robert, Robert, I'm going to ask that you use your outdoor voice as best as you can, um, so that the speaker phone can pick you up so those who are on Zoom can hear you. Because the closest speaker, I think it's the one that's between Rick and Joe. Um, and I don't know how much closer we can get that to you. So, I will do that and Jay, I'm going to need you to continue to project.
Sure.
They're still having a hard time hearing you.
Which is rare for Jay.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll just set the stage, so as everybody knows, uh, we're a member of Northern Berkshire Solid Waste Management District. The district negotiates the contracts for our waste removal from the transfer station, which is obviously the most expensive cost that we have at the transfer station. In the middle of an economic downturn, in the middle of the pandemic, we're also in the middle of Northern Berkshire Solid Waste attempting to negotiate a new contract with, as we talked about in the last meeting, a not so competitive. as we talked about in the last meeting, a not so competitive environment. So we're having a very difficult time trying to pin down exactly when and by how much we look at our permit fee. So with that context and introduction, I'll turn it over to Robert for the start of the conversation tonight.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I just have some numbers like I talked about last time, but I want to emphasize when you start the contracts, the waste that not been finalized yet, when the circuit is only that they have a meeting coming up on June 11th, then hopefully things will be solidified by then. But till then, we're just using projections here on these increases. So as I mentioned last time, we have these spreadsheets of what I'm recycling on one waste, and we're using 2019 data, specifically the average tons that we used, as well as what we call full, because we take a canister of the transfer station and bring it away. There are charges associated with both, the full waste, I think $365 is what the proposal is, and there's also a tonnage rate bearing from $110 per ton or $97, depending on what we're going to do with recycling the waste. So looking at the objection for recycling, which is the spreadsheet that says the recycling cost comparison for Adams, if you look at that far column on the left, you go all the way over to the right, so you see that far column, a percentage of change, total percentage change is 33% for recycling. And again, that's based on the number of pulls that we saw for 2019, as well as tonnage that's involved there. The total dollars would be $9,828 projected, and that's again for recycling. For waste, we're looking at the other spreadsheet, and we do the same thing with Adams, all the way over to the right, it's about a 34% increase. In terms of dollars, that's $5,130. Again, that's based on data from 2019. There's no reason to believe that that's going to change. If anything, it could possibly go up if you're COVID-19, the fact that it was a total cleaning out, so that those numbers could increase. But anyway, you hit the total, that's $14,958 that was projected for an increase. So just simple economics says that you have to cover that cost somehow, or else offset somehow through reduction in cost, or innovation, or some kind of other way to offset those costs. So the question is, how are we going to cover those costs? And I did some studying, I did the number of permits that were purchased in 2019, and we had 608 were purchased at the $50 rate, and we had 50 at the $10 rate, which was the second permit for the household. And I took that, and again, I spoke with the Town Administrator, Jay, we talked about spreading that evenly over the number of permits. So I took the $14,958 and just divided it by the 658 permits to come up with an increase of $22.73 per permit. Going further, I'm looking at the required permit cost is $50, so again, this is something worth discussion. And in terms of what the market was there, we're looking at the other towns, Windsor, for example, charges $75 annually, Chester $100 a sticker, $150 for sticker and bags, Williams $120 per sticker. So that gives us a little perspective on what the market can bear. And those are basically my findings in terms of dollars. Again, I just want to emphasize that the contract is not empty yet.
Thank you, Robert. Question for Robert or for, actually, Kelly, was there anything you wanted to add at this point?
I could barely hear him, so I'm not quite sure, is that, was that a recommendation to be $75?
I'm not going to make that decision. I'm just putting up the facts here and just kind of throwing it out there because again, our world has changed, and our perspective has to change on our own feet, so, you know.
He threw it out there as an option.
Yeah.
Okay. Because my personal opinion would be in the one that collects, you know, if we did go up to 75 and maybe gave five bag tags with each sticker, and they could still purchase other bag tags along with it, that maybe the ones that buy it just for recycling will maybe start to use it as their trash as well. And maybe with the five stickers with the tag, that makes it only go up $19 because five tags are $6. So it would only be like an increase of $19 from the 50, and then you get five free bags with it for the $75. I, I think the people in the town would go for that. I'm hoping that it would also help to increase it, sales as well for the trash removal and the stickers as well.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. So I will open it up to any questions or comments from the board? Yep. Hold on, John. Sorry.
Okay, we raised it to raise up to $75. The city of North Adams for a non-resident is $85. They'll take your mattresses, they'll take anything you want to bring them for $10 more. I don't think we're going to gain anything there. We're going to have, we already have people going from Adams to North Adams for their transfer station. I say that we should leave it where it is for now for the fiscal year, because we're not going to gain that much money here. Leave it the way it is. When we finally know what the budget's going to be, then we'll raise it in accordance. We can't just raise it up to $75 and find out that, gee, $75 isn't enough. We got to raise it to get another $20. I mean, we put it to the people in this town enough as it is. We don't have to do one increase, then another increase. And I, I'm a firm believer in that. We just leave it the way it is for this fiscal year. We're not going to lose that much money, but the contract is out until September 30th, I believe. Once the contract runs out, we have a new negotiated contract, the new price is going to go in. Once we have that new price, the next fiscal year, we'll charge them accordingly. That way there, we don't raise any eyebrows and say, gee, there you go again, going, doubling up on us.
Jay, what are the budget for those transfer stations?
On the budget side, it's approximately $60,000. The balance, the spreadsheet that Mary put together for everybody shows what expenses come out of the revolving account, which is funded by the permit, bag sales, and scrap return. And then we also pay expenses off the tax rate off the budget in the transfer station. So the transfer station budget is $60,000, and then we use revolving account to also pay the bill.
I mean, this year we did, because of the scrap metal, we have new employees up there. Our scrap metal, we're making money on scrap metal, which we haven't in the past, for one thing. So I mean, that's a big game. There's a lot of things going on up there right now. We're going to be going out of the game. I feel as though, I strongly feel as though that we should hold off on this increase.
My concern is after looking at the numbers that Linda showed us at our last meeting, and what that contract could be, and what our expenses could be to, for our tonnage and everything, if we hold off in setting the rate that people will buy the permits now, if we increase, we won't recover any of that. We might be at a point where we actually have to close the transfer station because we will, we won't be able to afford it. Like that's, that's what I heard weeks ago with that presentation, because that number that Linda presented was a lot higher, and I can't remember the number, but it was significantly higher than what we are paying now. And that's what concerns me, to wait three months, and we might actually lose the transfer station altogether.
I don't think we'll ever lose the transfer station. The transfer station is something that we do for the townspeople. It's, it's, it's a, not an analogy, I'm not sure what the proper word we're using. It's a service that we offer to the town. We're looking at $1 through $75, we're looking at Chester $100. These two towns, and Waynes Town, are very, their transfer stations do very little business. It's basically all haulers, where Adams is basically townspeople are going to the transfer station. There's a difference. It costs a lot of money for a hauler to go to Windsor to pick up that five houses.
Others? Anyone else have comments, questions?
Stickers are valid when to when?
Fiscal.
So it's July?
Which means everybody primarily buys them early. And that's one of the reasons why Kelly would like us to make a decision so she can start selling, she actually sells them at the transfer station. So the majority of your sticker sales are in the early part of the fiscal year, if not just before it. So if you, if you have the sheet, if you look at your, the transfer station, I don't think it was inserted into your budget book, but Mary did some math. For example, the total revolving fund brought in in fiscal '20, $28,083. And we spent down the majority of the fiscal '20 budget side up. So the concern very simply is, do we think by leaving at $50, even with an increase in September or October, whenever Jimmy thought the contract was going to be lifted?
It's probably going to be end of September.
If we're going to have enough fund to cover the increase in cost in removing the waste from the transfer station with that $50 permit, or increasing the permit fee at that point and charge whatever people choose at that point to buy the permit, what number that would be?
And we did have a meeting with Trevor of Casella two weeks ago, I think it was, and with COVID-19, we don't know when that's COVID-19, we're going to go back to normal. So they did say that they would extend it out further if need be. I mean, it don't, it don't matter to me which way we, I mean, it does matter to me in a way, but I just don't want to see the townspeople get wrapped twice in the increases for this.
I would have them try to extend an existing contract out as long as possible.
Well, I mean, June 1st, we have a meeting, the contract is basically drawn up, I got the copy from Windsor the other day. We're going to discuss the contract. The contract's still got to go down to Casella Waste, and I think Kessler is the consulting company is going to be looking at that contract also to see if, you know, I'm going to try to do a little more negotiating on it. I mean, it's tough when you only got one show in town.
Well, I, I think we need to decide the increase, piece of the pack, the people that utilize it, or everybody else.
Chairman, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Um, I was also, well, if we don't know what the contract is yet, if we leave it at 50 and then go up when the contract is signed, I don't agree with that either. It's either we go up now and stay that way, and maybe make some money where we can keep it that price for a few years. And also maybe give them another day. I know we've tried that Thursdays, and I think they like the Thursday night hours. And if possible, if everything goes well with the state budget stuff comes in, if we put a light up there and keep that night hours, that gives them an extra day, they may, that's something that they can think about now they're getting maybe five free tags and an extra night. But if, I wouldn't go up, if you're going to leave it the same, I wouldn't go up mid-year either. I would leave it that way for the year, and then maybe have a real big meeting come next year at this time to, for the townspeople to realize why we have to go up.
I agree with you, Kelly. I think we should leave it at $50 for the year, and come next July, when we go up whatever, accordingly, what the contract says we have to go up.
I, I don't know. I know I pay, and I almost say the rate, because it's actually low, I've been there a while, the, I pay more in two months, we'll say, than $75. So I, I don't think it's that drastic if they're going to go with a contractor or pay more to go to North Adams.
North Adams, North Adams would be $10 more a month, or a year, excuse me, for.
Then what we're, what the proposed increase is.
And North Adams takes everything. So I mean, it's a big difference. And also, North Adams, we're working on what they call a charm, where we pay our fees. North Adams is going to allow Adams residents to bring their mattresses and their electronics and whatever else they have to their transfer station, where I think, I believe it's going to be one Saturday a month for starters.
Except there's cost to dispose of that. They don't have to pay for the North Adams permit, they have to pay to dispose of the item. And even with, like for our transfer station, unless it's changed, you pay the permit, you buy the bag tag, but we don't wait. So we receive our costs through the bag tag. But if you go up there, Jim, even with a non-resident, don't you still go for that scale?
Not, not with the charm program, you won't. I'm quite sure that's where it's going to be. We can bring our mattresses up there. While right now, North Adams is, they have to renew their contract for mattresses, for electronics and stuff. That's something that they were going to open up to us.
How does North Adams do it? How do they do electronics, like mattresses? How do they do it? How does North Adams do it? They take, they do the same things we do, plus they take electronics, plus they take mattresses, and that's $85 a year.
From what I understand, they're set up to do this, or we're meeting a setup if they want.
I'll throw in a question. I would say, like basically what Rick said, when I had a private hauler, I was paying $98 every three months for every other week pickup. And that adds up, and $75 a year to be able to take my trash and my recycling, which is what I was getting rid of with curbside private hauler, is still a bargain. And it sounds like, I mean, Kelly's thrown out the idea of adding some stickers when people buy their permit, which is something we don't do now. So in the time that they buy their sticker, if we were to increase it, we would give them so many stickers, which is something we could do, and adding a third day, maybe longer term.
They also don't have to go up to 75 either?
No.
Go up five, 10, 15, or just pull. We'll be able to go up to whatever thinks is reasonable. If, if the contract at this rate that we know we're able to cover for with what we have budgeted and for what we have in the revolving fund, if we know we're going to get three months, maybe we could even get six months out of it, then that would reduce the need to go up that 23 change or that, that $25, which has a little bit of the safety margin, assuming maybe some people would buy the permit and use it at the $75 mark. So maybe we only go up $10 if we know we're going to have some cushion. My concern as Town Administrator is making sure that that does not go into the red, that if we know we have an increase in cost at some point coming at us in the next fiscal year, we, we have to find a way to cover that, that anticipated increase in cost. And there's only two ways to do that. One, appropriate money on the budget side, and I, you know, we've been trying to do a level funded budget. So like, for example, the transfer station operating costs are $59,455. $500 for the building, $1,800 for miscellaneous equipment, $25,000 for refuse removal, $24,000 for Northern Berkshire Solid Waste Management, $7,800 for any engineering costs that we have to do for the facility or for the landfill. So we would have to decide do we want to increase that $25,000 line item a certain amount to cover. So we would have to decide do we wanna increase that twenty-five thousand dollar line item a certain amount to cover? We add a cost, or as Rick said, you know, which hits every taxpayer, independent of whether or not they use it? Or do we shift that cost over to the permit side of which someone is using it, you know, therefore they're paying for a portion of its cost? There's no, you know, difficult, there's really no science to it. It's just at this point, we're faced with a contract renewal that in a perfect world would have come at the time where we have to decide what to go up by. In this situation, we need to make a decision so that we know what to charge our users, but our costs aren't gonna go up until at some point, say, mid-fiscal year.
Right.
You're gonna get a bunch of users that are gonna say, well, I'm buying my sticker now at fifty bucks. And if every user that's gonna use it, just randomly say six hundred dot, six hundred users, say they're gonna buy their sticker now at the fifty-dollar rate, that may not cover what the increased cost goes up. That, that is my concern. It's just how are we going to cover those costs when they go up?
Right. And the other thing you gotta realize next fiscal year is there are Teamsters, there, there's gonna be million-dollar increases. The contract, it's gonna keep going up. If, if the Teamsters Union were fighting that down in Boston, uh, Windsor was down there two months ago, I believe, had the, the lawyers who are representing us in the other communities, and we're still fighting it. Because we're not, we're not a big city out here. You know, and so, but they are working on it, you know, try to curb some of the Teamsters costs. And if we can do that, it's gonna reduce our costs also. But talking with, uh, you know, um, what's, I can't think of the guy's name, I gotta ring down here somewhere.
Trevor.
Trevor, down at Casella Waste. I mean, Tre- Trevor's willing to work with us, but he can only do so much also. But I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna see a huge, see townspeople get whacked and then get re-whacked again. I mean, I, you know, ten dollars and the dump stickers, I, I would agree to something like that.
But I don't, I don't think we'd ever charge people twice.
No.
You know, if somebody buys their ticket, buys their permit at fifty bucks, God bless them, they got that for fifty bucks in fiscal year. If we go up to seventy-five, they buy it at seventy-five. If you buy it in December, the, the person who's kinda losing out is the person who buys it in December anyway, because they're only getting...
Correct.
Months of, of, you know, you sided it, or the other person bought it headtime, they get four, twelve months you sided. So I don't think we would ever go back and say, hey, you only paid seventy-five, but now you gotta go to the eighty-five. I don't think we'd ever, you know, hey, God bless if you bought it early, it's really worth it to learn.
And I believe the whole sticker thing came about because it was coming down to a point where if we didn't try this, it was getting close. Because it was, it was such a hit on the, the budget. We can't afford to keep paying more for a selective service.
Right.
You know, that much more.
And Joe brought this up at the last meeting. The other way you save money is you compact better and you make sure that the number of the, you, you get every ounce out of that container. So now you're, you're paying to remove it when it's fully, when it's full up. And then you're paying for weight. So whether it's empty or whether it's full, you're still paying it, what was it, Jim, three, forty-five, I think, for municipal solid waste? So, you know, we know that whether we get that contract or not, we're gonna start training our guys to, to look and make sure, and they do, they do, Ray does a great job now, Paolo does a great job. They make sure that they get the voice out there. Can they do better? Sure. You know, that's Robert's responsibility as VPW Director to make sure that they're, they're doing their job up there. But, so that's the other way. But I, you know, how much are we gonna be able to save off that, you know, reduced by a couple of tons, reduced by a couple of loads? It, it's not, it's not a hard science, hard data, because we just, it's hard for us to have these decisions.
And so there's a couple of things we could do. We could, um, leave the fee as is for next year. We can increase the fee. We can add things with the fee. Um, we can table until our next meeting, which I know Kelly probably doesn't wanna hear, but I've also heard that there's a June eleventh meeting about the contract. We're still in the month of June and we could still listen to see what happens at that meeting. And we can, uh, decide on perfect fees at June, on our June seventeenth meeting. I know that that will be leading to Kelly's.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna make a point here. Julie Love's meeting is going to be the commissioner's voting on the contract to move it forward. So it's not, it won't be approved on Julie Love per se.
Okay. So then it wouldn't matter if we gave it or not?
Julie Love, then we go down, it's gonna be going down to Casella. And I, I believe Casella already has it and Trevor's working and looking at it and stuff, right at the present time.
So just for conversation's sake, just for quick math.
Yep.
At six hundred and eight permits, at fifty dollars, the town earns thirty thousand four hundred dollars. So for those of you who are geeks at home with your calculators, that's six hundred and eight times fifty dollars. That brings in thirty thousand four hundred. So if we know that a portion of the year we're gonna go up fifteen, the question for Robert now is how much do we have to go up in that, in that permit to make it fifteen? If we assume we're still going to sell six hundred and eight stickers at sixty dollars, that brings us up to thirty-six thousand four hundred. So I think we have to kinda figure out, Jim, at what point do you think those new figures might kick in? And work for, work from that angle too. And there's also the other assessment that goes in there too, is what the tonnage looks like and what the number of poles look like.
Correct.
But, you know, that way, the only data we have, Robert, do we, we don't break that down monthly, do we? Number of poles per month?
No, I don't see it, but I'm sure...
It's just an annual, an annual figure. So that's the other, the other component is we don't really know, you know, what the, you know, in January, right after the holidays, probably spikes a little bit, then it goes down, then you get spring cleaning, it probably goes up a little bit.
Right now, I'm speaking.
Right, right, right here. So we know that right now we're paying out more than we were before, simply because of usage.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, transfer stations really were started, as Jim alluded to earlier, on, for a case of Windsor. I mean, you're not gonna get any trash hauler to go up to Windsor and, you know, he's not, his gas and time just isn't worth it. So a lot of the rural areas are a transfer station. And a lot of them made it at the beginning because the recyclable market was a goal. And recyclables would bring in the cash that you needed, but that bottom, that was dropped out. So the idea now is that making money from recyclables isn't gonna happen. And I don't think our transfer station can ever be, uh, cost of, uh, make us money. I, we'd be lucky if we could even, you know, uh, I'd say break even, which I don't think we can ever do. And once Jim also alluded to this, is there's a monopoly now with Casella's. It's kinda similar to when the four, two-four has the busing contract. So you're at their mercy and they've treated the school system quite well. And, um, another thing too is that if you have to go up seventy-five, I don't think if Christine mentioned and others who have haulers come to their houses. I mean, that's a lot more. I, I've always, you know, recycled and brought my things to the landfill because that's just the way that I feel I wanna do it. But, you know, once again, Robert mentioned, you have to become very creative. And, and creativity is something that, you know, you have to work on. And as I mentioned, and you mentioned, Jay, if you compress everything to the max, if we, if we phase so we can push everything and get more into our compactor. And, you know, I, I'm up there and I know both Kyle and the other gentleman, his name will look at me now, they do a good job. But, um, you know, they can't be at the, uh, place where people dump in. And I've seen people watching through their, and I've seen it two or three times, watching through their windshield. So when a guy goes away, run over and just throw it in. It's, it happens all the time. I've seen it five, six times. They just wait there and they look and then they see anybody's there and they just run over and toss it in. And you can't expect them to sit there every day, you know? It's not like the state park where you sit in a little booth and, you know, where people come in and they pay their tickets. But it, it's never gonna be a moneymaker, but it's a social component to our community. I mean, people love to go up to landfills. I just went to Cheshire today because I'm helping my brother with a roof. I had to get rid of the asbestos shingles. So he has a sticker, but I had to pay forty-five extra dollars when I emptied his truck for the removal of asbestos and other debris, you know? So I don't know. Asshole, excuse me. That was asshole.
Joe, you already said, you were soda, but that changed too.
Yeah, but anyway, I'm just saying that it, it, it has to really go up. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I mean, it's never gonna be solvent, but if we continue to, you know, it has to just be checked by everybody. Everybody's gotta be doing their part up there.
And, uh, Robert has a plan to install cameras up there to dissuade that behavior.
Yeah. Because it happens. I mean, that's people's violent way of the, the end. Because once again, just say it one time more. I've seen it. I've seen it a number of times. People just wait and a gentleman goes down to help somebody and they just run over and throw it out. I've even seen a guy with, uh, like, uh, orange ribbon, so it looked orange, you know? So when you're going over it from a distance, it looks like it's stickers. But I don't know how you can, you know, continue to make it go without adding a little more money out to the people. I don't think it's gonna be a point where now people are gonna say, well, I'm not going up there, it's seventy-five dollars, when other people who have private haulers are paying a lot more. But that's just my, uh, just thought.
We can also go up to seventy, remember, we have the full, you know, full range.
Right. We have a, we have a recommendation, um, from the, uh, from the town, um, from our, uh, treasure collector. Um, I would only support like a seventy-five plus the deal of the stickers if we did it for two or three. How long is the contract that you're signing for? Because we just need some stability. Because, you know, when we started off at twenty-five bucks, we knew that was way low, but we got, we pulled people in to buy stickers. That's what the board at the time decided. Hung around there for a while, went up to fifty, hung around there for a while, now we're going up to seventy-five. You know, if we could just, you know, if we could do it for a two-year period, uh, just some stability in the, in, for, for two years. Instead of, I'm gonna be seventy-five this year, then there're gonna be a hundred bucks next year. Just, then they just say, the heck with it, you know? We're gonna lose the, the pace that we have. So I would say if we could do a two-year, uh, this is just a suggestion, uh, two years, seventy-five dollars, be a great deal of stickers, the six stickers, um, you know, over time, get a two-year deal, you know? And, and you know what the price is for two years. It's not gonna be, it's gonna go again twenty-five and it's gonna give up, you know?
I think Trevor's looking at a three-year contract.
Three years, uh-huh.
I'm quite sure that's what we're, we're, we're down with two weeks ago. Because he don't, he don't wanna go through all this every year either, I don't blame him.
Uh, they won't sign a one-year contract.
For sure. A three-year contract. The other, the other math, just so the board is aware of all your options, you can also increase the bag tag, which is right now set at a dollar twenty. You can increase, you know, so we give out five at a time for six bucks. You can also increase that. But that only really gets you the people that are disposing of their MSW up there. That doesn't cover necessarily your, the, the recycling. So we felt the better math is, is the used sticker and leave the bag tags alone. And you're still giving a break, so you have to pay more to use the facility, but you're still paying a lower, you know, up twenty for each bag that you, you throw away. But you could also go up to say just two dollars there as well. And Kelly gave me some, although like I said to Joe in the discussion, you know, three-year comparison. Some people are buying for the next fiscal year due, you know, from an accounting standpoint, it's kinda a function of the previous fiscal year. So it's hard to tell the figures. But for example, permit stickers in fiscal twenty were six hundred and fifty-eight. That brought in thirty thousand nine hundred dollars. Bag tag stickers were nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six and brought in eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. However, in fiscal year nineteen, or accounted for fiscal nineteen, we sold sixteen thousand eight hundred and nineteen bag tag stickers. So you see a drop there. And I know, I know Joe had asked us at one point, I can't answer why it dropped. Either the user dropped or it's accounting dropped. Kelly, these are your numbers. I don't know if you know anything more about, you know, those numbers, but just, that's the raw data.
Well, yeah, because when they first, when the bag tags first went out, they were a dollar apiece. And before they went up in July first, they bought, the people that buy them bought them in massive amounts in fiscal nineteen before twenty, before they went up at a do- still at a dollar, so they were saving money. So that's why they were a little bit lower in fiscal twenty is because most of them bought fiscal ni- the end of fiscal nineteen before they went up July first. To save themselves some money.
I have Joe and Rick.
Yeah, I just, another thing too with these large haulers, um, they've been fortunate now because gas prices have been down. Those trucks burn a lot of, of fuel, plus they're heavy maintenance machines because there's so many moving components to them. That, that the next contract that's going to be signed, I'm sure that they're going to take into account that they know the gas prices aren't gonna stay low like they are. And once again, uh, with all the moving parts they have there, there's always a lot of, uh, maintenance with those type of machines. And the older you get, the worse it is with seals and all that stuff. Because there's a lot of hydraulics involved.
The other, the other factor to keep in mind too, just, I have a note here. If somebody approaches that transfer station and says, I have scrap to deposit, we don't look for a permit. Because there's no cost to us to remove the scrap. We make money on that. So we don't ask somebody, you know, if somebody shows up with, with scrap, we allow them to put it into the dumpster and go, because we get paid for that scrap. We do that, that does not cost the town any money. That is the only service we offer up there.
All right. I, I'm gonna make a motion, but I'll preface it with, as far as a two-year commitment, this board is gonna, uh, basically decide next year if it goes up or not. And I, I don't wanna handcuff ourselves for next year, who knows what's gonna happen? So I'm gonna make a motion that the sticker price, and you can report me as a jerk, I don't care. That sticker price go to seventy-five dollars to include five bag tags effective immediately.
Be for fiscal twenty-one.
Right, but the price change for twenty-one stickers wouldn't be effective immediately. So if somebody came in, if I came in tomorrow morning to buy a sticker...
For next year.
It would be...
The new fiscal year.
Yep. So I have a motion by Rick to increase the bag tag, or sorry, the transfer station fee to seventy-five dollars for the next fiscal year. And that fee would include five bag tags at the time of purchase. Do I have a second?
I'll give a second.
That's a by Joe. Is there any further discussion?
I'm gonna vote no. I just would like to see a two-year deal because it goes up pretty much every year now. We're gonna lose, uh, individuals, customers if they just see this trend. Uh, that's, that's just for me, to my own opinion.
Yeah, actually, I don't... I didn't, I didn't hear, you didn't have a time? I, I agree with that point of you, uh, you were saying for just that one year?
Yes, for next year. And, and also the, I don't, did it go up last year?
No.
No.
No, it went up from twenty-five...
The board decided not to because it didn't wanna lose people going there. So this board can decide, you know, next year, I just don't wanna handcuff us either. I mean, if something drastic happens, it's either, you know, raise a little bit or close a darn thing.
And that initial twenty-five dollars was for six months, wasn't for a full year. And then it was, and then the board decided for a full year that they would increase that to fifty because that equaled that first...
And it wasn't really an increase.
There wasn't an increase. And even with a contract that we're not sure what that increase is gonna be in our expenses, I'm of the same mindset of Rick, that it's probably best to just go one year. Because if, we might be having a conversation next year about whether or not we can even afford to have the transfer station. So, but that's the motion on table, just for the one year.
If we close the transfer station, Northern Burshur Solid Waste District will be closed also, which is gonna...
also, which is gonna force an whole new millennial, that we're not gonna, we'll never be able to afford, because now you're looking at, seems there's curbside picking up and it's quite expensive.
So, the motion on table is seventy-five dollars for one year, and includes five bag tags.
I'm still gonna second that, because the reason I'm saying that is because the elderly that don't drive, they, they have to have somebody come and get their trash, and I think people that drive cars and are ha- are more mobile people, then I believe they have the wherewithal to pay for that, and, uh, it becomes a social outlet, and I'm just asking, is, are we going to keep, uh, brush, because there was some discussion, I, I would change my mind if we weren't gonna allow people to bring brush and cuttings there, because there was some talk that it was too expensive and that, so, is that gonna be part of the, their seventy-five, uh, dollars that they're still allowed to bring in cuttings?
That's, that's up to the, the board to decide, give you the pros and cons on it, Joe, which as, you know, as you articulated, really haven't changed, we, there's a cost to dispose of the brush, and we have not disposed of it in several years, uh, both from what we bring in at the transfer station and from what we do ourselves with our own DPW vegetation control work, so, in order for us to dispose of our distinct brush pile that we have at our material storage yard, we estimated twenty-five thousand dollars to have a professional commercial tub grinder come in and get rid of that entire pile, and the pile is, uh, is behind wastewater, I want to put this close, I, yeah, or the big stumps, all of that stuff, so it's not anything that our Vermeer unit can do, it's not anything that another, you know, third Harvane commercial can do, it has to be that, so, in terms of the brush conversation, we can figure out a way to charge, you know, additional money for the brush, we can attempt to limit the amount, which we probably may, we already may have a limit of like yards, I don't know, Rob, do we have a, an actual limit that we're supposed to enforce? You know, as you said, that's a kind of a manpower issue too, Joe, hey, that's a yard, or not really a yard and a half, it's tough to measure, that's one concern, we can also attempt to find a way going forward for any brush, and now, do we attempt to get rid of that as we get, in other words, try to work with, uh, a tree service that may want to serve from all, so, at the end of the day, accepting brush is a cost, you know, to the town, for us, as Jim said, if we receive a charm day from North Adams, which is not a member of Northern Versus Salloway, and we're able to bring brush up there, as long as you have your permit, perhaps they'll accept it, is that your understanding, uh, Jim, if that goes through, so, you'll, whether we accept it, or whether North Adams accepts it, a resident who buys a permit from us will still be able to deposit brush, the question would be where, so we can hold off on the brush conversation until we know, when, when do we expect that decision to be?
Don't know yet, there's, there's a lot going on, and with also, because, I really can't say, I don't know.
That's, those, those are the debates about the brush, there is a cost.
Because there's a lot of people that bring their cuttings up there.
Well, yard rates, I think, would, would always be accepted, you know, leaves the composting and the grassing, that's never been an issue for us, but that naturally these poses, it's that hard rock, those branches, uh, those types of trimmings that, that pile up, and we have to find a place to store them.
You know, must be worth, time for town to buy a chipper, but I, I don't wanna kill a dead horse, I don't, just, that's all I've got to say, and I second, uh, Rick's motion.
All right, so, if there's no further questions or discussions, um, all those in favor of a seventy-five dollar fee that includes five bag tags for the next fiscal year, say aye. Aye, those opposed?
No.
And no extension, so it's a three-two vote, um, with a seventy-five dollar fee for next year, okay?
We can leave brush alone for now, we can revisit the conversation.
Well, people are gonna still be able to bring it now, right?
Yep, thanks for that.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are you guys gonna still keep the, uh, second car for the household at ten dollars?
We can make a, a motion on that, if you would like us to do that, but yes, I propose to create that fee, there's, so there's an additional fee for a second car, it's an additional ten dollars.
I, I don't personally see a reason to raise that one, they're already paying the sticker price, this is just an additional deal.
Right, but there, no bag tags with it.
And no bag tags.
Correct.
Okay, the ten dollars basically covers the cost of the sticker, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
You can lower that if you want.
You can lower it?
You do anything you want.
Well, it was, my understanding, it was set at ten dollars, because that's how much it cost us.
Yeah, I agree, Kelly can tell you for sure, but that was, that's a, that covers its cost, and I don't know what the sticker cost.
Yeah, it's around there, we, I think we make a buck on it, or something like that.
The base may not work, it may not work.
So, I need a motion then on the second tag, for the household.
Is that on the agenda?
No, but it's still part of the fee.
It's part of the fee, Director.
For the transfer station.
For very simple compared to North Adams, North Adams has resident, a non-resident, commercial, non-outside commercial, it's got like six or seven fees, we're, we're easy, with three fees, what costs for a, for a bag tag, permit, and an additional permit.
So if it's, if we, it, so if it's to leave the cost alone for the second tag and the permit, you can roll it into the same motion, it's not touching the bag tag, that, that'd be the dollar for the, for six for, no, five for six dollars, I get that right there.
All right, I'll make a motion that the price of the second sticker at ten dollars and the bag tag, the price of the bag tag stickers at a dollar.
Twenty.
Twenty fees remain the same.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed for an extension? That is unanimous, okay, thank you, and while Robert is still here with us, we have in front of us, um, we have a letter from Robert, and a letter from the town administrator, I'll read the letter from the town administrator, dear Chairman Point, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the Board's ratification, as provided in section ten of the Town Charter, I have appointed the following people for the positions of seasonal laborer for the Department of Public Works, Mike Durant, David Holt, and Sean Marco, Mike Durant, David Holt, and Sean Marco have worked for the town in this capacity in the past and are coming back to continue to support the DPW to provide this valuable service to the town of Adams, upon your ratification and the passing of all hiring requirements, the seasonal laborers will begin this position effective June fourth, twenty twenty, at the DPW seasonal laborer rate of twelve dollars and seventy-five cents per hour, I will turn this over to, uh, Robert and to Jay, to see if there's anything else you would like to add with regard to the seasonal.
I'll let Robert add anything if you'd like.
No, it's just that we just wrote the name down, and, um, it works for us in the past, they're good workers.
Yeah, I just would like to say, um, they're, they're already working, you know, your move forward is tomorrow, but, uh, I, I concur with, uh, uh, Robert, that, um, I know two of them quite well, and, um, we need, we need the manpower, and I just worry so much about, the biggest thing I worry about is the Army Corps of Engineers, we're using so much of our seasonal help to do those banks each year, I mean, and, you know, they just finish them and the vegetation grows and grows, and that's where a lot of our time is, and I don't know, can't work with the Army Corps, they're very tough, once you sign a contract, an agreement with them, you're in it, so, I, I, I'd like to make a motion to ratify, uh, the DPW seasonal laborers, uh, Michael Durant, David Holt, and Sean Marco.
Okay, I have a motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That is unanimous, okay.
And Robert, we have, uh, two others, I believe, in the pipeline.
Yeah, we're, um, we're gonna hold it five for a period of time and see how it works before we expand, but that seems to be the general consensus from the operations supervisor, from the working form, at five we'll do for now, we'll do for now more.
I, I just wanna say, I was up in cemetery today in Bellevue in the ends of Maple Street, cemeteries are looking really good right now, what, what help we do have, we have guys up there that, you should be out doing other things, but they're up there mowing, and we wag it also, and compare to Memorial Day weekend, it, it's pristine up there, I mean, I, as a selectman, I was very embarrassed to be up there Memorial Day weekend, and that should never happen like that, ever, and I hope I never, ever see that again, because our, the people that go up to that cemetery on Memorial Day weekend are up there for social gathering with their loved ones, and they go up there and see that place is shambles like it was, it was very disgraceful, that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Jim, um, so next on the agenda is approval of job description for a DPW working foreman highway, this was brought before the Board of Selectmen at our March fourth, um, meeting, and was tabled at that time, um, and so it's been brought before us, uh, Robert, if you wanted to add anything, is Donna on the phone? I just need to find out, because I think Donna season one to speak to this as well.
That's what she had said earlier, but I was never able to.
Yes, yep.
Catch basically.
Donna, I think I found you, is that you?
Yes, it's me.
Okay, great, so, Donna, I don't know if you want us to start, I know that this was a, a job description, um, that you had been working on when you were interim town administrator, um, and had moved through the personnel subcommittee, uh, it got hung up there for a little bit, we presented it, uh, March fourth to the full Board of Selectmen, um, and it was tabled, so I don't know if you want to start that conversation, then maybe turn to Robert to talk about the needs.
Sure, I can just, um, start, um, it's, it's pretty simple, um, I think one of the, um, efforts, um, that we took on when, um, you know, I was at, uh, interim was recognizing that, um, a lot of our job descriptions are not particularly helpful, they're very vague, they don't have a lot of detail in, uh, within the, uh, job description, and so, this, um, position description was just part of that overall effort at, um, making sure that the job descriptions really reflected what individuals did within that department, um, and, um, where there was, uh, the need for parity and stuff, um, in the organization or within the department, um, we also made sure that the job description reflected that, so.
Okay, Jay and Robert, I'll turn it to, well, I guess I'll go to Robert.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, for balance, we need that highway working foreman, if we have any working foreman for a part two recs already, and to have that balance on the highway side is just a natural progression, we'll receive that crew of highway workers, just like our foreman for the parks and grounds, and that provides the sort of support from operating supervisor Tim, and so this is like a natural IRT that you see in most organizations, that somebody, you need a work, you need a working foreman there, and I think it's important to have that, this provides some relief as well as some oversight to those managers, or even our operating supervisors, so, I think it's a point that we have a.
Questions for Robert?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Um, it, it's akin to this, but, um, is your operator, operations supervisor sitting down with you, because he knows, uh, procedures and times when things are done, is he correspond and trying to help you, because Jim just alluded to that the Memorial Day, and, you know, the, uh, the cemeteries didn't look good, um, is the communication there, um, is, is the operations supervisor sitting down and saying, Robert, I know you're moved to this position, and, um, here's normally what we do, and this is the timing when we do it, because I feel, what I see, there's a lack of communication, we wanna be a tourist town, and you go by the Ash Look Trail down on Lime Street, you can't even see the sign, has he ever, ever mentioned to you that, oh, we should get down there and do the sign? I, I'm just asking, is there a communication with him to the point where you're talking daily, or is he kind of going on his own and doing things, do you feel he's been helping you, uh, with all the nuances of our community, because it's tough for someone coming in, and all of a sudden, you know, you're, people are saying, oh, we got a new, a highway department, and, uh, everything looks like hell, you know, because you don't know as a new person what timing goes and when you should do things, I mean, that's communication, there should, there should be communication, and the operator supervisor should be doing that communication, because he's next in line, so, I just wanna make sure that there's communication, and that he's telling you, uh, what you should do, not that he's bossing you, but, you know, to give an idea of the components, to make this community, and what should be done at certain times to make people less, you know, uh, adamant about things, so, I'm, I'm just encouraging good communication amongst you and Tinkota, and not, you know, saying, oh, they can do this, and, you know, in other words, I want, uh, some communication, so if you let me know if Jim is sitting down with you and helping you along in your manner, because it's tough for a person like you coming in and not knowing the way things go, and I don't want anybody turning their back on you and not coming up to you and say, why don't you take a ride, have you gone on a ride, any rides with Tim? Okay.
Yep, uh, when I first started, and we continue to do that, I, I speak with Tim every single day.
Yeah, okay.
But having this foreman in here is also a support, because I speak with Steve on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Right now, speaking with Bob, who is, you know, filling in, uh, for Tim, so that communication is on a daily basis, I'll call in the morning, what I'm working towards is a planning by week, to see what they're scheduling for next week, and my job as a director is to set the priorities, and Tim is to direct his crew and how they go about doing that priority, so, um, that's, that's what my.
Because it, 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 it appears to me, and this is just my thought, as Jim mentioned, I saw it, it did look good, the cemetery, and that, everybody knows that on Memorial Day, those cemeteries gotta look good, I mean, that's just common knowledge, if you're living in Adams, it's, Jim mentioned, I mean, and people are going up there, there's nothing as beautiful as seeing all those new flags and realizing how many people, you know, went to war for this country, and then going up there to see grass, as I thought, it looked pretty bad too, and, you know, but there has to be a lineage of how things are done, when they should be done, and, you know, it just doesn't seem like the communication is there, in my opinion.
All right, so I just wanna say too, again, we usually hire seven seasonal, and we did not have that this year, and we're just starting to hire them, so that was a big factor in that.
Yeah.
Now, again, in terms of prioritizing, you get everybody, all hands on board, to go to the priority and take care of other things we'll give for that moment of time, and that's the kind of priority that we're working on, you know, achieving that communication.
Right, yeah, on communication.
Some of it, some of it too, Joe, was, and I, I see the communication, in fact, every Wednesday, uh, at around nine o'clock, Robert, myself, Donna, and Tim get together, and we talk about priorities, we talk about what's going on, any issues or concerns, and we get a sense from where they're working, and, uh, we do a project status update, et cetera, so we get everybody together, then at about ten o'clock or so, we talk about facilities, uh, frankly, we tried to run an experiment, which was, we wanted to see how much we were able to accomplish without hiring the large number of seasonals that hiring the large number of seasonals that we have, knowing that we are coming up on tight fiscal times. Also, we knew without play on the field, the Parks and Grounds guys didn't have to put as much time and effort into the field. We assumed incorrectly that we'd be able to kind of shift their attention to the cemetery. That did not work out as well as we had thought. And frankly, we were caught with our pants down at the last minute that we need the seasonal. So I use the cautionary term going forward, because as we look to build the budget, after the month-to-month is done, we have to take that into consideration, because that is one of the potential cuts there is to say we don't hire seasonal. But with that comes a service delivery failure. And that is, we may not be able to maintain our infrastructure to the level that we have. So that was kind of a learning curve, you know, for us. And I own a part of that responsibility. Because
I've said this so many meetings, that we're getting so much new things in our community, which are really good, like the new visitors parking lot. But then we don't have the people to maintain it, to make it look good. And so we want to have a bike trail going all the way to North Adams, and we can't even get somebody in there to cut the grass where that big Ashwell Creek sign is. And with part of the trail closed, there's so many people using that park, you know? And I walk by it every day, and I say myself, Jesus, I'm a tourist, and I'm riding my bicycle, and I come to the end of this, and, you know, the trash can, you can't even see it, the grass is up to the sign, and it just looks horrible. You know, and I just, I don't know, I guess. But if you keep on using the crutch that we don't have enough people, you become an enabler. People got to suck up and do their work. Because I've always had a good work ethic, and if I have to do it more, I'll do it. You know, that's just the person I am. I can't say everybody's the same, because they're not. But I know, if I see something and I can do it, I'll do it. You know, and that's all I have to say.
I'm going to try to bring it back to the conversation about the job description, if we can. Is it about the job description?
I was wanting to talk about the cemeteries and stuff.
Okay.
I did bring it to people's attention, proper people's attention, that we didn't even, somewhere I'll book their seasonal, whatever you might call. When we had our budget hearings, I mentioned it, during our budget hearings. Said it's something we have to have. I talked to Robert in the hallway upstairs before, told him the same thing. It's not, and it fell on deaf ears, because of an experiment. Well, it wasn't a very good experiment, by any means. My phone was ringing off the hook from Friday before, Thursday before, until Monday after. Just, everyone needs to know, there is a cost associated with carrying seasonals. We have budgeted, at a regular budget cycle, $58,000 per season. That's what we have budgeted for seven individuals. And we're now coming up on five. But you also have to look at it this way. These people that are up at that cemetery are people that have been around in this town for 70-plus years, 60-plus years, or whatever, paying taxes. And we really let them down this year. Really let them down.
I'm going to stop the seasonal talk, because that was actually the item above where we are now, when we talked about the appointment of the seasonal laborers. So I'm going to bring us the discussion back to the job description for the DPW working foreman highway, back on March 4. John, you had actually tabled this, and Rick, you seconded that. So to bring it back on the table this evening, I would need those motions placed at, I guess, bring it back. Because it was technically tabled.
So I'm going to make a motion to remove that item from being tabled.
Okay.
Real quick.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And what do you want to do with it now?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the job description of working foreman for highway as presented by the Personnel Subcommittee.
Okay, I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jim. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Or an extension? That is unanimous.
May I ask a question about that?
Certainly.
We're just okaying the job description. We're not okaying filling it. Okay.
Sorry, we're filled. Sorry, we're filled?
No, it wouldn't have to be posted internally before it would be posted externally. It is my understanding, when we talked about this back on March 4, that this is in this year's budget. It was budgeted for the year.
Been budgeted.
It has been budgeted. So we could go ahead and post this and fill it.
It does not change the head count of the department. It was Mr. Cota's position that he vacated with the Board of Three's Operations Supervisor. It was not filled. At some point, as Donna said, the job description was looked at, needed to be updated. Mr. Scrappy is working foreman on the Parks and Grounds side. His job description was reviewed. His job description was approved by the Board in, was it March? Whatever date you said I was thinking.
Yeah, March 4.
This one was not. So this one will be posted and likely filled in turn, which is why you see on the work chart that it won't increase the head count.
Okay, it won't increase the head count. I presume, well, certainly, I'm not going to mention a name, but I would bet my bottom dollar that I know who's going to get that position. So that person moves up, and let's put a line going up. So all of a sudden, the bottom person, do we have to hire someone else to fill out that slate? Okay.
So like, for example, Joe, you see, for hypothetical purposes, if you look on there, you see operator three. Let's say that's the most senior person who might put in for the job as a small size.
Yeah.
The operator three position would disappear from that in its entirety.
Okay, so we're going to go up and then not going to fill another position, because, you know, at this time, putting, you know, hiring more people when we're supposed to be mean and lean, just isn't the time to hire people. Just my thought, you know?
All right. We're going to move on to tag sales. Donna, thank you very much for joining us.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night. So there have been a number of phone calls to town halls with regard to tag sales and whether or not the town is allowing for tag sales while we are still dealing with the health crisis. And I know, I think Kelly is still on the call with us. Kelly typically comes to the Board of Selectmen in the month of May, asking for the Board's approval for the annual townwide tag sale, and is looking for some direction on that. So I thought it would be good for us to have that conversation about whether or not we would be moving forward with the annual town tag sale, and whether or not we would be allowing tag sales in general. Tag sales does fall under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, per legal counsel, who is still on the call. So I wanted to open that up for discussion and possibly any actions. Yes, Jim?
I would like to make a motion to forego any tag sales. There's too much hands on certain things. There's too much close proximity with people. And I just don't think it's the right time for tag sales, first of all.
I have a motion by Joe to suspend tag sales at this time.
Second.
And a second by Jim. Is there any discussion?
I'm going to plan the, the tag sales.
I'm not saying anything about tag sales. I know that donation locations are starting to open up at this very strict guideline about how they would open. And I think it would be, my personal opinion, it would be difficult to enforce that on a local resident running a tag sale.
I just want to say, my uncle passed away. He can only have ten people at his funeral. You can't have fifteen people on your lawn that picks up.
Yeah, I understand. I was wondering the governor, how to be committed to talk about cars and tag sales.
I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything either, Joe. I haven't seen my eye. I haven't heard anything about tag sales there.
Thank you. This action can be reversed in the future if it comes up.
I mean, if Joe wants to amend, I mean, it could be to suspend tag sales while we're still in a pandemic, or we could just...
We could always amend it later.
Okay.
Just saying.
Yep. So I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Or an extension? That is unanimous. There you are, Kelly. You have your decision about the annual townwide tag sale.
And I couldn't hear it, so tell me what that was.
That it is not going to happen.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay. That brings us down to department reports. Jay, anything under town administrator?
I have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Legal counsel. Everyone should have a copy of legal counsel's report, but I think, Ed, you are unmuted.
I am. So since my last report, I worked on the following matters. I spoke with the bankruptcy trustee and attended a bankruptcy meeting with the trustee concerning MJD, the current owner of the Curtis Paper property. I prepared for oral argument, which is scheduled tomorrow before the Massachusetts Appeals Court via Zoom concerning the Gaines case. I responded to an inquiry regarding the legality of tag sale permits. I reviewed and commented on the latest draft of the tobacco regulations. I researched and provided comment concerning the town's budgetary options. I responded to two open meeting log questions. I reviewed and commented on a public records request, and I attended and participated in today's Board of Health meeting.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions for legal counsel?
Just one. I wanted to get on the Board of Health meeting, but I couldn't get there on time. And how did that play out? Did anybody...
I...
See, it was okay. Is anyone mad about that? No, I don't have any questions.
My understanding with regard to the topic of the tobacco regulations is that they did review a draft of the tobacco regulations. They set their meeting, their next meeting for Wednesday, July 1. I think that they're still going to be reviewing the tobacco regulations at that meeting. And they will be setting a public hearing regarding those regulations no earlier than late July.
Thank you.
Outside of that, I don't know anything else, because that's all I asked about at the end of that meeting. That, and that they have a new chair for the Board of Health, and that is David Rhodes. And vice chair is Peter Hoyt. Those are the only updates I'm aware of. All right. Any other questions for legal counsel? Hearing none, I'll close out the department reports, and I'll move on to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. I will start with John, because the camera is pointed this way.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Jim, anything?
Doug McInally, Jessica Linda, Sarah McMyself, Natalie Trevor, and Cassella Waits, which we all know already. We discussed how to write the contract. And Trestler Consulting was informed of what went on. We're meeting June 11 to discuss and draft and invoke and present the contract to Cassella Waits. Volcan Waste Collection will be June 27. We are encouraging residents to unload their own cars because of COVID-19. Food trucks at the Compton agent continue to be a success. We're serving well over 200 families every two weeks. I attended a Prudential Committee meeting, May 25. Water overheating in the tanks is still an issue. John Barrett has worked diligently to resolve this issue. And banners for fallen heroes are now at the printers waiting for Brian to print the last example for approval. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. Rick?
I have nothing.
Joe?
Yeah, I took part in a webinar on the MS4 general permit draft modifications. And there was two people represented by the EPA talking about, it's been revamped somewhat, some of the language. And most of the people, I wanted to ask questions, but you had to kind of type them in as you went along, so I didn't get involved with that. But most of the questions came from developers. A lot of the new modifications have to do with developers. And when there's money involved with development, they had a lot of questions. I was more attuned to want to talk about clean water.
All right. Anything under announcements and good of the order? I'm going to start down with Joe, because that's where the camera is.
No, it's gone on too long today. I have a few things, but they're not important.
Okay. Rick?
I have nothing.
Jim?
I have nothing.
John? Under announcements and good of the order, I do have two items. I just want to report out that Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 public hearing on Monday went well. Thank you for attending. And I know Community Development is following up with the businesses that were on the call, but they are also following up with the communication to those who are, have been defined as a micro enterprise. And that communication will be going up shortly. So Donna wanted me to share that, in case she wasn't on the call any longer. And then I also wanted to read, because we don't always get to get nice comments, but we did receive a nice letter that just says, I want to reach out to you to say thank you for reinstituting small parades for loved ones in your wonderful community. While it probably seems like a miniscule thing, I had the opportunity to see firsthand how meaningful it actually is for families in Adams. Once again, another community missed the boat, so I won't name the community that they mentioned. Yesterday, my granddaughter turned five, and I saw how community becomes unified even during these trying times. While we were out there, several neighbors went to their own yards and also cheered for her. I am confident that the two minutes it took for the drive, I've put no citizen in harm's way to exposure of this finally waning virus. None of this would even be possible without the tremendous effort put forth by not only a terrific officer and servant to Adams, but a sincere, caring, wonderful person, Officer Nick Dubrowski. Officer Dubrowski has for years dedicated himself to children and families in your community. I had the pleasure of meeting Nick at Rhodes Camp several years ago, and we became great friends. Nick's efforts should not go unnoticed, and I would like to also sincerely thank Officers Travis Cunningham and Alex Morse, and those incredible firefighters who volunteered their time to be a part of making five-year-olds, insert name, birthday one she will never forget. If you can possibly get the names of the firefighters, please extend my heartfelt thanks to them as well. I'm sincerely a resident of the town of Adams. So I just wanted to make sure I pass that along. I know that Officer Dubrowski has been organizing the wave parade. He indicated that each parade has two to three cruisers, normally two to three fire engines, two to three ambulances, and three to four forest warden vehicles. And I think they're taking about 15 minutes from start to finish. But it is going well, and we've had a number of them. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Madam Chair, may I just make one quick comment? I forgot, but I did want to mention about the small businesses. They're the backbone of our community. And anything we can do for people in small businesses, they make up this town. And I was glad that Ms. Mullin, I don't know her name, from Berkshire Regional, planning that we had people on the phone. I think that was one of the few public meetings that I remember that we had people on the phone communicating their needs. So I think that was a plus for us, because it shows that, you know, that we're the lead community, and we need, you know, all the help that we can get, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
We do have an executive session in front of us, so I will ask for a motion to go into the executive session with the understanding that we will only be coming out of executive sessions with the German as our only business at that point. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that the Board enter executive session for purpose number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and for litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargain or litigating position of the public body, and the chair saw the letters.
Okay. I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jim. This is a roll call vote, Joe.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christine is a yes. So that is unanimous. So as of 9:29 PM, we will go into executive session. I do ask for a five-minute recess. I do ask for a five-minute recess though before we pick up.
Chairman, did you say that when we come out of that, we're just going to adjourn?
I did, prior to this. Yep, but we will come out of it just to adjourn. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to end the Zoom call and I thank all of you who participated.